October 21st. The motion is now called to order. Could you silence your cell phones, please? And I will lead us in an invocation and ask Vice Chair to lead us in a pledge.
But Oliver, now you know you're saying that to me and you.
I'm just a general statement. Heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We thank you for another good day to be here. Please be with us as leaders. Help us to make right decisions. Be with our city employees. We work hard every day. Be with our citizens and help us all work together to make Shreveport a better place to be. Amen.
Peace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present. Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Administrative Conference on October 7th and the October 8th City Council meeting. At this time, does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests? I'll just say, welcome to everyone that's here. It's been another busy two weeks. Lots going on. I know we'll talk about that in more detail tomorrow. But again, I say, for those people that say there's nothing to do in Shreveport, there's plenty to do. Mr. Sibley, are there any awards, recognitions of distinguished guests or city business?
None at this time, other than the mayor and Mr. Chairman, but I will note two items of city business, if I may. One in particular is the health fair going on this Friday, October 25th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at Riverview Hall. Our HR department's putting it on. They'll do health screenings and various things, but they'll also be giving out flu shots for those who are part of the city's health program. For those who are not, there will be a $21 fee. And we want to be sure and get that word out that that's going to be this Friday, 10:00 to 2:00 at Riverview Hall. That is the health fair. Also would like to note for the council that Comcast has replaced Ms. Smith with a new representative. He is scheduled to be here at the first meeting in November. They also indicated they intend to submit communications to each of the council members with contact information on the new person who will be taking Ms. Smith's place. So we'll keep you posted, make sure they do that. But we will have them here at the first meeting in November to meet the new rep and give you guys a council opportunity to meet with him and visit with him.
And what about if any communication is ongoing with Ms. Smith? Is that like, if I get a call today of somebody that needs assistance, can I still?
Right. She is still going to work through transition until y'all get the new contact information. We have it and I'll submit it to you guys, but they really wanted us to wait and let them send you an official notification with all that information inside.
That's fine with me, Dale.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Sibley, I know I got up as you were making your comments. Did you mention the fact that we will have Pratt here tomorrow?
No, I did not, but I will, Mr. Chairman. We will have representatives from both Pratt and Republic here tomorrow to speak specifically to the recycling program in terms of updates, information, problem solving, et cetera. So they will be here tomorrow during the regular council meeting and we'll present them different communications.
Perfect. Thank you. Does any council member have any information or concerns relative to property standards at this time? We're an easy group today. We will have a master plan committee report wherever Ms. Sanders is. We'll have that tomorrow, a brief report. We have no public hearing scheduled for tomorrow. Mr. Sibley, are there items to be added to the agenda?
Just so there are, and I know this, Mr. Thompson stepped down. Ms. White, you want to handle that? I will. There are two items, Mr. Chairman. One is Resolution 193. It's a resolution suspending the effect of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the unseen celebration put on by Schrack. And number 194 is a resolution ratifying the use of certain equipment by Olive Street Ministries. We will ask that the council add both those today.
Perfect. At this point, I have no.
Is that, Mr. Mr. Is that a part of Councilman Oliver Jenkins' ministry?
That would be in my district.
He might be here.
But I'll share it with Brother Jenkins.
There you go. There you go. There you go.
All right. At this point, we, I have no request for public comments. We have no confirmations or appointments to be considered today, no items under consent agenda for introduction. Mr. Sibley, let's proceed to items to be adopted.
This is under Section 8, Consent Agenda, Item B, to adopt ordinances and resolutions. There is one, Resolution Number 191. It authorizes Francis and Corinne, excuse me, Francis Adaway and Corinne Cassiola located at 1013 East Kings Highway to connect to the water and sewer system of the City of Shreveport.
Stand by.
And that's all we have under Consent Agenda, Mr. Chairman.
One second. Looking at the map. And it looks like the water main is on the other side of Kings Highway, so they would bore under Kings Highway. Is that correct? Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
The, the property to the north.
Why don't you come forward, Ali, so we can get it in the record?
Sorry, I'm just.
The 101?
The 101 is not on city water or sewer?
No. There's about four properties in there and they are owned by the family, the Cassiolas, Ms. Cassiola and her daughter, and her daughter, and her other daughter. None of them are in water. She's the only one requesting because she has a well. All of them, they have their own well system and here it's dried up and she didn't want to drill another one. She thought it's easier to connect to city water.
Hmm. I guess, I mean, obviously that begs the question, is the daughter, whatever, whoever else, family member also going to run out, I mean, run out of water?
They will have to make their own. We made it very clear to her, she will be getting one connection for her own house. The others, if they run out of water, they have to run their own connection to the city main.
They can't, nobody else can tap into.
Nobody can tap in and use her own service. It would be one metered service for her own house. And these, the Cassiolas in there, about 20, 25 years ago, the city put 36-inch force main in their side of the road and we acquired from them a 25-foot easement. And when we did that, the city already, they have a letter. They thought they didn't have to do this resolution and all that because they had a letter where the city said, if you give us the easement, we'll allow you to tie into city utilities and all the stuff back then. So she provided us with the letter. I told her, no, we still have to take it to council and get it approved. Because we have a sewer main, 36 inches, going all the way from Stoner Lift Station to Lucas Treatment Plant, laying in their property in front of their house on that side of the road. That's why the water is on the other side.
I got you. But I mean, if we were going to do this for the long-term benefit, we would suggest that they did one, I'll call it a water main, that they would each tap into that went east-west?
No, there is a water main available in that road, so each one will make a connection to the water main.
But how do the properties to the, call it the east, the way I'm looking at the map, how are they going to get to the water?
There's the only, there's only two of them to the east. See, they own 10-acre tract of land, Ms. Cassiola, and subdivided that and gave access to her children. Like each one of them has access from Kings Highway to the back with the small sewer. Really, they don't have a platid servitude. All they do, they allow their daughters to go back and forth because they live behind them and the other property behind them. So if they want to run a service, they're going to have to run a long service on their own property, which is okay. They're not crossing anybody's else's property.
The 1746 and 1747.
And even the 10.
They can land, yeah.
But I mean, the 10, 11, whatever, 10, 113 property, which I assume is behind our sign there.
Yeah. All of them are their own, they own all these properties in there.
Okay. Thank you, Ali.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ali.
All right, Mr. Sibley, let's continue.
Section 9?
Yes.
This is Regular Agenda Legislation Sub-A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage Or, which will require only one reading. Number 183 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property within the City of Shreveport in connection with the Murphy Street Project. This is parcel number P4. Number 184 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property within the city in connection with the Murphy Street Project. This is parcel number P4. Number 185 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings within the City of Shreveport connected with the Murphy Street Park. This is parcel number P5. Number 186 authorizes the submission of the 2014 through 2018 Consolidated Plan and 2014 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Number 187 authorizes the mayor to execute a resolution of concurrent support and recommendation for Amtrak passenger rail service in North Louisiana. Number 188 authorizes the mayor to waive the background check fees for high school students enrolled in the nursing assistant program at the Caddo Career and Technology Center in Shreveport, Louisiana. Number 189 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus. Number 190 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
Any discussion?
I'm glad to see this train initiative is.
Still moving.
Out there. Not sure that's right around the corner, but I'm, you know, not going to hold my breath with anticipation, but I'd be certainly, you know, encouraging even us moving forward at this level, so.
Don't stand by the tracks just yet.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say to Councilman Jenkins, I think it's going to move pretty fast. I believe the mayor's good friend is working on that. State Representative Roy Burrell and the mayor, I think, we all know that he's a mover and a shaker.
Mr. Shine, you and I both had the privilege of serving with Mr. Burrell on the Shreveport City Council and I served with him in the legislature and we certainly welcome and appreciate his continued efforts.
Right. And you know how much he got done while he was down in the state legislature, so Oliver thinking feel sure that, you know, this will be taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, those of the council, to give you the full picture on this set of circumstances, and I get to speak with a bit more specificity, this is one of those things that is generational and it is more likely, Mr. Shine and members, that Oliver's young children and Jeff's young son will be the ones who will be boarding this probably before any of us who are here. But in addition to the longstanding effort to try and connect this area to Amtrak and extend it from here on eastward towards Mississippi and ultimately the vision is towards Atlanta, which is why there is some added interest in this effort. In addition to the Amtrak scenario, there is another one that I think is worthy of council awareness as well as general community awareness and we'll be communicating more about this to you all as well, is that the DART Dallas Area Rapid Transit Authority, which, Mr. Shine, in all honesty, is one of those things that was just started when my brother Clarence moved to Dallas back in 1979. I saw being worked on in snarling traffic when I was in high school. And here now, some 30 years later, it actually is in existence. Those good folks have a vision that would ultimately end up connecting Shreveport to Dallas via a DART rail system. But as opposed to it being Amtrak, it would be a parallel scenario with higher speeds intended, the high-speed rail that we hear spoken of so often. And they are in fact in the process right now of establishing memorandums of understanding with communities along essentially the I-20 corridor between here and Dallas. We are in discussions with them and we'll be sharing that information with the council. And they both represent scenarios, one with the slow train, one with the fast train, again, those that will come some generations after we sit here where we are today. But if it ever happens, it's because we keep pushing against that rock and eventually get it rolling.
Since we're speaking of transportation, I don't know if we need to go to the transportation champion now, that is, you know, our legislator, Mr. Burrell, who's obviously an advocate for 49 North as well.
There you go.
Greater transportation umbrella. But it does bring question of, there's a bus group in the state of Texas that does this point-to-point bus service.
Megabus?
Mega, that's it.
They're here.
They're here.
They are here?
Yes, they are.
When, when did they arrive? How did I miss the great unveiling? How does one circulate the streets of Shreveport and not see a megabus?
If you will remember, I think in fact, we brought it to council because at one point in time.
They were trying to.
We were trying to work an agreement and arrangement with them. Their business model has them where they don't have stations. In most cities where they operate, they go find a street, pull up to the curb, usually near a trash can and hopefully a bathroom. And that's where they drop off, pick up, and what have you, oftentimes out in the element. Here in Shreveport, we were trying to work with them to try and facilitate some co-use of our terminal down on Crockett Street. Unfortunately, we never could work it out in terms of actually coming up with a set of circumstances that worked for them and it didn't end up impacting how we have to function as a local transit system. But they pick up and drop off right there at Edward Streets, just north of the intersection of Edwards and Crockett. They even now have gotten us on the side of the blue double-decker megabus logo that gives you the Atlantas and the Nashvilles and the Memphises and what have you.
And Houston.
And Houston. And Baton Rouge.
I saw that one from Houston.
Absolutely.
I didn't know they had them either.
With the free Wi-Fi and the double-decker.
Yeah, I think that's the deal, yeah.
And the seats as low as $9, I think, sometimes even less. Or for, we'll make a point to have Gene give us an update on that tomorrow for you, so we'll have some more specific information, but.
I understand around, certainly like for those going, you know, an older age group that goes from, let's say Dallas to Houston or something, it's $20 a seat and.
Or less, in some instances. And their, their business model, in addition to not making use of stations and ticketing agents and, you know, all those sorts of things, land bathrooms and what have you, they're also largely transactive, ticket purchase-wise, via smartphone. You buy it online and the bus driver has the little wands and scans and what have you that they even have, they have extensive Twitter presence when you have a problem or an issue or they have a delay in arrival. Oftentimes, those messages are sent via Twitter, Facebook, and what have you. So it's a true example of something that has kind of changed the landscape in terms of travel and transportation.
And they got a tracking system.
And Mayor, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, one of the, as the mayor indicated, the way we, they became known to us is trying to basically access the terminal illegally initially, you know, just wanting to pull up and, you know, so, you know, our guys got with them, said, hey, you can't do that. If you're going to do that, you need to stop, you need a bathroom, et cetera. We need to work out an agreement. Well, they basically just started operating on private property because the thing that we had SPD looking for is to make sure they weren't using public rights away, which is something we told them they couldn't do. So they just find a place where somebody will let them pull up and they go on. As far as we know, we don't have any regulatory authority. We don't have any, anything other than, you know, any other vehicle on the street, making sure they don't violate any traffic laws. But more so, our biggest concern is making sure they weren't using the public rights away without some kind of agreement with us and we never reached agreement.
Because their actual bus service and inspection and things like that are all at the federal level.
Correct.
For those of us that grew up in the era of continental railways and Greyhound only, it's an ever-changing landscape.
What, but for some reason, we don't show up on their website maybe. At least we don't show from the leaving from category.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins is over here trying to book a ticket.
This, you know, naturally, always in the mode of trying to be as progressive as possible, group approached me and said, well, how come you guys haven't done anything towards megabus? I didn't.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're here.
Well, they need to be more here or something. But I'm going to do a little, I just pulled up their status and it says, you know, leaving from and Shreveport doesn't shift.
We will, we'll have Gene give us some, some current status on where we are and what they're doing and what their presence is, but frankly, I discovered them, councilmen, one day driving along Mylum, just east of the courthouse, and stopped and, in fact, to tell you how, I made Gene aware of it to ask and get some additional background. I took a picture of it, pulled out what was in my BlackBerry, snapped a shot of it. That would have been this past spring on a rainy, I think it was a rainy Sunday, because at that point, they were on Edwards, pulled to the curb and doing the drop off and the pickup and what have you. Part of the problem is sometimes created a little trash and other debris and other things scattered along those spots and what have you. So that's one of the reasons why it becomes necessary for local folks to get in and offer some degree of regulation. And as Dale mentioned, that they initially thought it'd be okay just to pull up under the, close to, up under.
Yeah.
The sports train facility. And unfortunately, as anybody who ever pulled under there, even inadvertently, you know that there's immediately a loud speaker that comes over to tell you, don't do that. And there's a good reason. We have an operation there that runs a specific way and that needs to, both for safety and order of security, that our operations are facilitated. But we'll, we'll find out what their status is and the assumption that we have is that that service is still ongoing. I'm, I'm online right now as you are, Mr. Jenkins. We'll see what comes up.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not, it's not really a, you know, I'm not debating, I'm not debating. I'm just curious about the whole deal. That's my, I mean, I didn't mean to suggest that, you know, I was just answering when somebody asked me and.
And if they're here, I'd like to be sure that we're on the website. That would be the other good thing. All right, there's no more discussion. Mr. Sibley, let's proceed with introduction of resolutions.
These are resolutions not to be adopted prior to November 12, 2013. There's one, Number 192. It authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with J.P. Morgan Chase Bank for the financing of vehicles and equipment, otherwise providing with respect thereto, and that is regarding the Water and Sewer Department.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Shad.
Maybe I could wait, but, Mr. Mayor, this might be a situation that, as dealing with water and sewer, a lady named Miss Mayer, she told me she'd call you and she called me and I tried to fight her down to discuss her situation, but she said that some worker, now I don't, I don't want to get no worker in trouble, but some worker gave her the information that her problem.
Maybe we skipped the section. I'll ask for a clerk.
Was the city's problem. And I would hope that if you could pass that on, maybe that city workers have to be, I'm trying to explain to her that it was really her problem. She said, no, and I, one of the workers came out here and told me. And she said, you lazy politician, don't do nothing. So I'm trying to apologize and, and it bears a difference, but, and I told her, I said, now sometimes workers give me information that they really don't understand and they really don't know, you know, just to satisfy you because I can tell you're a little perturbed, you know, a little ticked off. So.
We get her name and address, we'll, we'll follow up on it.
Yes, please, and I wish in some of your department meetings, you know, if you just kind of mention it, say, you know, workers, you have to be careful about what you tell citizens, you know, just tell them to call in to the department, or call in to administration and, and you can find out, they'll give you what the, what the policy or what the law is about it.
We'll address that also, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Under this section, Introduction of Resolutions, our electronic agenda lists the single resolution is 192. The printed has it at 191. I don't know if that one matters.
Resolution 191. There is a 191 up above under Ms. Cassiola that's doing the, okay, doing the water stuff. So maybe it's a typo on.
On the hard copy.
I think it's just a difference between the.
We'll find out which one is correct.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sibley, would you proceed with introduction of ordinances?
These are ordinances not to be adopted prior to November 12, 2013. Number 136 closes and abandons a portion of Fannin Street between Baker Street and Douglas Street, located in Section 37, Township 18, Range 14 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, and otherwise provides with respect thereto. Number 137 closes and abandons a portion of Benson Court Alley between Baker Street and Douglas Street, located in Section 37, 1814, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 138 closes and abandons the 10-foot wide alley between Kemper Street and East 72nd Street, west of Lyon Avenue, and the East Cedar Grove subdivision located in Section 25, Township 17 North, Range 14 West, Caddo Parish, Louisiana. Number 139 declares a public servitude on certain adjudicated properties and otherwise provides with respect thereto. Number 140 amends the 2013 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. That's solid waste. Number 141 zoning matter C7313. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of Yuri Drive and Arthur Avenue, changed from SPI 3B1 Commercial Corridor Overlay Buffer Business District to SPI 3E B1 Commercial Corridor Overlay Buffer Business Extended Use District, limited to a veterinary clinic for household pets, small animals only. Number 142 is zoning matter C7413. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of East 74th Street and Lyon Avenue, changed from B2 Neighborhood Business District to R18 Urban One Family Residence District.
Any discussion? Councilman Sam Jenkins.
I want a little more clarification on the street closures on Fannin Street. It appears now, if I'm looking at the map correctly, this would be coming out of downtown on Fannin, past Douglas Street, and you want to close down that part of Fannin between Douglas and Baker. I thought, does Fannin go all the way through to Pete Harris?
No, sir. This is primarily in conjunction with the Millennium Project. We'll get, we'll get Malcolm tomorrow to bring some maps and better illustrate that for you. But these, these two are totally in conjunction with that project and they should extend no further than the boundaries of that Millennium Studio project. But we'll, we'll bring some maps and clarify that for you.
Had we closed some down there before?
We have. And this is just kind of completing the development as it was intended from the beginning.
All right, okay. I just need to kind of, not that I got a big objection to anything, I'm just trying to see, I want to know you could get, come out of downtown, be able to go through that area and end up back on Pete Harris. What would be the other routes that a person could take to make sure that they can get to the other side?
We'll clarify that for you, Councilman Jenkins, because I think the intention was to leave a throughway and as far as I know, that's what's been done, but we'll make sure. It is on introduction, but we'll get some information for you tomorrow.
That's one where I think we had a big discussion about it some time ago, but we hadn't heard about it for a while and actually I was a little surprised seeing them there too, but I remember what it was.
Mr. Sibley, if you don't mind, I'll take Sam now and then give him a walk through.
Give him a walk through, okay. Malcolm, you got it today?
I don't have a map, but I'll bring you one tomorrow. These are in the extreme northeast portion of the Millennium Project, where Millennium The, the reason why we're bringing the closures and abandonments to the council now, the city owns all of the property now, abutting these alleyways. And we're looking to close and abandon those and then develop that, that property.
So you still have Travis Street that goes through there?
Yes, sir.
That'll bring you from downtown to Pete Harris?
Yes, sir. The intention was to maintain throughways and, as I said, we'll bring the maps and be sure and highlight that for you tomorrow.
Okay, just as long as we know, we got, you know.
Yes, sir.
We can get through that.
Right. There's still access and these are very underutilized areas.
And Sprague would remain open as well, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir.
Which one now?
Sprague.
Please don't close Sprague down.
You're going to have to show me where that. Councilman Shad, what happened, what used to happen on Sprague Street?
All right. On that day, I'll explain that.
That's before my time, too. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I said you opened that door.
I've only heard stories, Jenkins. I've only heard stories.
That is definitely before my, and I know it's before the mayor's time, too.
The good news is, is that you now need a calendar to count the traffic on both Sprague Street and Travis Streets, west of Common Street nowadays, when that was not, not too long ago.
was not a, uh, not too long ago, where there was quite a bit of traffic that flowed constantly, practically 24 hours a day.
A lot of tourist attractions down that way. Lots of sites to be seen.
In fact, in all seriousness, that is one of the things that, uh, that, that represents, one of the things that people point to in terms of the exciting stuff that's happening in Shreveport right now, uh, is the fact that an area that once was largely dominated by, uh, uh, some, some, uh, not so savory things, is now filled with, uh, a, a great dimension of the, the knowledge-based economy we're trying to build in this community, so. And, and we're going to make sure we, we do it as smartly as we can, uh, because we not only want that activity there, but we hopefully also want to return more traffic in the form of retail and residential.
I'm told they used to have some good madams down there. I don't know all of them.
I don't know what that is.
It's a homing, it's a homing.
I have a real question on 140.
And as Malcolm comes, let me, let me leave it on this note.
Oh, this is only Malcolm.
It is absolutely the area where, uh, Huddie Ledbetter, Ledbetter, uh, honed the skills that allowed him to, to, to sing his way out of, uh, out of two murder convictions apparently, and, uh, also to touch the musical world in a way, I don't know if they were murder convictions, I know he was in the Huntsville Prison in Angola, uh, and he sang his way out both times, and, uh, Fannin Street Blues, and Good Night Irene, and House of the Rising Sun, all were first sang down in, uh, what was at that time known as St. Ball's Bottom, so, uh, we're glad to have it there, and, um, Millennium Ledbetter hopefully will continue to be able to move forward with these additional phases that they are working with us and, and this council to try and move forward. Good things.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
142, I think somebody's coming on 140. I, I don't think we've shocked Malcolm so much that he returned to his seat at this point.
Is that in yours or mine?
Well.
On 74th.
That would be one of my questions, but I believe it is in mine.
I think it is, too.
Okay. 142, so they are going from B2 to R1. That's what it.
Right. It's, they're in order to subdivide it for two residential lots.
Okay, and that's, I guess my question is, if they weren't subdividing, they can put a residence there, right?
I'm sorry? You can't, there are provisions in some of the business districts to get allowed to put a residence on a business property, but the more normal path is to downzone it, and that's what they're doing.
Okay. Hmm. And, do you, I mean, I guess the question is a little bit wide there, and there are a lot of areas there, is it the same owners, are they selling the property, or tell me a little bit more?
They're subdividing it, I, I don't think they're, they made no express intent to, you know, to, to, to market the property to outside parties. That certainly wasn't brought up as part of the case, but, you know, unless they volunteer that information, we won't typically inquire either.
Is the property vacant now?
Yes.
There's no, there's a, there's no structure on it?
I don't know if there's any structure, there's no structure being used, you know. Our, our GIS system will occasionally show structures that were torn down several years ago and things like that, you know, I can check this.
I don't know, I'll do the old Google.
Well, even, even Google may not be 100% up to date, but, you know, we're certainly not, there, there's certainly not a CO on the property.
This would be before that you get to the grocery store, would it?
It's kind of, I mean, there's so many lots that are available already in that area, it's kind of curious if they got some more in mind than, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion.
Section D, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sibley, let's go to section D.
These are ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 116 amends the 2013 capital projects fund budget, this is the famous reconciliation of capital projects, and number 117 amends the 2013 capital improvements budget, this is in respect to Herssey D. Wilson.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, on the Herssey D. Wilson, uh, the author of that one, Mrs. McCullough, has asked us to prepare an amendment, um, to show that it is the intent that the $1 million will be returned to the unappropriated bond fund, uh, once the second sale occurs. Um, we, Julie and I have been talking about that, and we don't think that it's appropriate to put it in the now therefore be it ordained clause, but we could add another whereas clause to explain the intent of the council in adopting this and to say that it will be returned to the unappropriated bond fund or used for a purpose for which the council agrees, specifically agrees, uh, once the sale, you know, occurs. We, we just wanted to say that because it's not legally, it doesn't legally bind the council to do it, but at least we can express the intent.
And, uh, I guess this is really a question for engineering, is the project ready at the moment?
It's in the final stages, within two weeks to three weeks, we should have the plans ready where it'll go out for bids.
So there is some timeliness part, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Oliver.
And also, Oliver, it was just explained to me that, you know, in order to move forward, you need to know that the money is there.
Oh, I understand for it to go out the bid, but I didn't know if it was still going to be several months before. Okay, that was what I was asking.
Any other discussion? Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation that we will consider tomorrow?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I believe that brings us to property standards appeals. Ms. Farnell.
It ain't over yet.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Our first case is in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area. It is 1720 Exposition Avenue. The owner is present, she and I have spoken about the property, it is up for demolition, and she is asking that the city demolish the structure. She's in agreement about the cost and everything, um, if she is here, if you wanted to speak with her.
I believe, Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith.
You can come up.
So her property is in your district, Sam, and she resides in mine? Is that why my name is there?
Correct.
Okay.
Good evening.
How you doing?
God bless every one of you.
Good, good to see you, myself and Ms. Smith and Ms. Farnell discussed this, we're going to move forward with the demolition and, you know, how that's going to be worked out with, uh, a plan to pay it off, and I understand you're in agreement with all that, is that right?
Absolutely. I certainly can't pay it all at once, we'll have to work it out.
I'll second it.
So that's my motion.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Vice Chair. If there's no discussion, please vote.
We're taking care of it, Ms. Smith, you can go.
Thank you.
And that is six yes, one absent. Thank you.
Our second case is 1447 Andrew Avenue. This is in Councilwoman McCullough's area. This came before us on, in August, um, and we did give the owner 60 days. This was a piece of property that we were going to demolish. Uh, during our final research, we found that it had been transferred to St. Mary Baptist Church. Uh, they filed an appeal. I'm not sure if anyone is here today, but, uh, we're requesting that the structure be demolished.
So you didn't talk with the deacons and all of those good people at St. Mary about?
We, I did talk with them, I told them that we were going to give them some time, we gave them 60 days, um, they had someone that they had told me that they were going to.
They had a demolition person?
They did, that's what they told me, but since that time, uh, the house still sits in the same condition as it was when, uh, it was purchased, so.
Could maybe I ask for an extended 30 days and let me allow, or give me an opportunity to speak with the pastor as well as Deacon Ellis with the Lakeside Association?
Seconded by Councilwoman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Can we do it in 15? Any chance we could do it in 15?
Yeah. It's a pretty bad house.
I mean, it's a bad house, and we've given them 60 days already, I mean, I'm not, it's, it's in your district, I'm not, I just, I've said my piece, that's it.
Well, let's just do 30, and I'll just ask them for 15 when I go speak with them personally. Does that sound?
Just want to move things along.
I understand, I appreciate you for that.
And, uh, six yes, one absent. She's going to bake your cake.
All right, Ms. Farnell.
Our next case is 7129 Santan Street, is in Councilman Shine's area. This is a structure that, um, we did notify the owner in June, he signed for it, and we, um, attempted to demolish it after everything had been completed as far as our research. We found that Mr. Poston had created a LLC, and it was conveyed to the LLC, of which we had to give him a 10-day notice, that's why we're here today. He signed for that and filed an appeal. The house is completely deteriorated, um, is very unstable.
You need a motion to?
I am requesting that it be demolished. Mr. Poston is here.
Oh, is he, oh.
He is here.
Oh, you mean, okay.
Yes, Mr. Poston is here.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about over there.
Yes, sir.
He's in bad shape.
Mr. Poston, would you like to make some comments?
I'm David Poston, I represent, uh, VPO. We, we are a tax sale buyer, we buy tax sale properties and bought hundreds of them, and this is a continuing problem that we have. This, this house is a marginal deal. When it would be finished, it'd probably be worth around $20,000 or so, and so, uh, it's, it's, it's marginal, and that's why we haven't done, one of the reasons we haven't done anything with it. The, the second reason is, is we actually are, again, are a tax sale buyer, which means under the 2009 law, we can't even get possession of the property legally, unless we go through a court, uh, and to acquire, uh, possession. In this case, what we're proposing is that we come in and, and board the house up, secure the house, and, uh, and then we will get ownership, um, we'll get ownership around, uh, Sep, uh, June of 2014. Until we get ownership, we're not really willing to spend the $8,000 or $9,000 on this marginal house in order to, uh, to keep it, uh, to go ahead with it. We have looked for the owners, as I'm sure y'all have, and we haven't been able to locate them, and, uh, you can understand that our interest in it, uh, the problem we have, another problem is, is that if we go ahead with that work prior to ownership, which would be in June of 18th, there is no guarantee that if the owner comes back to redeem this property, that we would be reimbursed. Now, when we become the owner, and around June the 18th or so of, of 2014, we intend to, to move forward to the house and do whatever's necessary, and even though it would be a marginal deal, we, we could do it there. But I think that this problem has been going on for quite some time, and until there is a mechanism in place for the owner, when they go to redeem it, to have to pay for people such as you're asking me to go ahead and, and do this work on this house, then, uh, we, if they redeem it, then we just lose that money. So I think it's reasonable to think that we wouldn't want to do that now, but we are in lieu of that, uh, offering to secure it, board it up, maintain the yard and what have you, until we secure that ownership. Now, in that, in this case, that's what we're asking, but I would say that in lots of these cases, especially in cases where, let's say the house is worth, you know, 20, 30,000 more dollars, a total of $100,000 or so, if you, if you tear it up before we get the ownership, then all it's going to do is, is, is we're going to drop out and not pay the taxes any longer, we'll never, we'll never get ownership of the property, and the people of Shreveport are going to end up eating that demolition price because the owner, you haven't been able to find it, we haven't been able to find them, you tore it down prior to us gaining ownership, so you won't be able to get us to do it either. So, um, I would like for us to get a chance to do it, and I think it would, it would save the house and it would save the taxpayers, too.
Uh, I'm, Oliver, I, I agree with you that we have to move along on cases like this. This house has been sitting there for, uh, like you said, for a long time, those people have been on my time, and to be truthful with you, if it was in my neighborhood or in yours, uh, uh, I might would have paid for the demolition.
Second.
It's, it's really, uh, uh, it's really a bad sight, and I, you know, talking about waiting to, uh, 2014, uh, 2014 come around, and it's going to be waiting to 2015, and it's going to be waiting to 2016, so, um, uh, Dorothy, I, I, I'll make the motion in it.
Can I, can I ask just a question on this? Okay, so, under what you've just told us, that if you had some degree of a surety that you are actually going to have this property under your charge come June 18th, and I'm assuming what you're also going to tell us is that if you demolish it, you could do it cheaper than you would if, or you would plan to restore it, or you would demolish it yourself?
I would plan to restore it. I am not the owner, I, I just want to make that clear.
No, no, I mean, you're VPOE, I mean, whoever you're representing here, I mean.
They're not the owner either, they're a tax sale lien holder, and under the 2009.
Yeah, taxable interest in it, and after their redemption period or with the judgment of a court saying that, uh, the, the previous owner has relinquished ownership, then.
That's right.
You may declare the owner.
Until that happens, we're not an owner. In, in this case, and in lots of these cases, it's happening over and over and over again.
Too many times.
During that period, and I can tell you that, that there is a simple, reasonable way to handle this, and all that is, is to, is for the council to direct their people to, uh, make the owners pay this.
The legislature would have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and fortunately, I mean, in this subject area, this may not help in this, but, um, in this, in this particular case, but in the future, um, you know, the redemption period is going to be reduced, so that we won't run into such a lengthy time period that it takes before a new title is granted, and that will help in the restoration of some of these older properties and more mature neighborhoods, I mean, but that's a problem statewide, and, you know, I mean, that's what he's saying, I don't see a good answer to it, but I see what he's saying.
I actually only have about a $200 or $300 interest in this property at this point. What I'm telling the council is, is that, that if you didn't, if you demolish it before I get it to ownership, then the house is destroyed, I won't be able to do it, and the council and the city will, almost 100% of the time, is going to lose that money for demoing it because I don't own it, so you can't get the money from me. I, I will not own it until June 18th. If that is, if that part is rented there, then you could make me pay for it.
Tell me, tell me your name again.
David Poston.
Poston, uh, that house is a safety trap. Uh, we've been working on this for a long, long time, I don't know why, uh, you bought it at a tax sale, but we have too much of that going on, and, 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 Mr. Mayor, it destroys the neighborhood. Uh, those people that live out in that area deserve it better, uh, because to be truthful with you, like I said, if it was next door to me, I would have had it torn down and I paid for it. You don't want that kind of stuff in your neighborhood, I mean, it's bad on the people who live in the neighborhood, it's bad on the school kids who live in the neighborhood, it's just, it's, it's just bad, it's just bad, period. We're talking about improving the quality of life and improving our neighborhoods, um, uh, Dorothy, I go along with the recommendation that you made, and, uh, see if you can get a better deal on another house.
Question by the Vice Chair, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Please vote. And that is.
Mr. Shine? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Shine.
Oh, okay.
That is six yes, one absent.
Darcey, maybe I can get a little sleep now. Those, Mr. Mayor, those people have been calling me and worried, almost set my butt off, I don't know what I said now, yeah. They've worried my butt off for the last five or six years. And you see, when, when, when we don't do anything about things like that, it makes people feel like we don't have no interest in their neighborhoods, where somebody can just come in from, from Alexandria or from somewhere else and buy those houses. Let them sit up there year in and year out, you know? It makes us look bad.
Mr. Chairman. And it is a quandary that unfortunately I think we'll continue to face. As I heard the gentleman express, that if they're not in a position to be able to do anything about the property within a degree of certainty of ownership until, I think he said, two thousand and eighteen.
Right.
Wait, four, June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen? It did sound like twenty eighteen, because that's what I thought at first, but then...
And that would also fit in line with sometimes that redemption period is five years. So that's what I thought I heard, too, but he's saying that was next year, so maybe he has a suit for me.
But now, when that date come around, Mr. Mayor, it's gonna be the same. If you could see the house, if you could see the condition...
Well, it's in here, huh?
Yeah, I mean, but if you could just go out and see, the pictures don't really tell the true story. Darcey tell you, we've been working on that for a long time. It's a, it's a shame, it's a shame.
And it's a tough situation, because I mean, even if, and we have no guarantee that if, once they got ownership, they would do something right with it. But let's even say, under the assumption that they are great folks and they really were gonna go in there and redo the whole thing when they got ownership of it, still, we don't know that they ever really will, you know? It's a long, it's a long waiting period.
They don't have a track record of really doing anything.
Sure, they don't. And then the problem being...
You got something in your, you got something in your area.
And it's a difficult...
Mayor, we're doing the right thing.
It's a difficult situation, because then what you end up with, even after we demolish, which is probably the safest thing for the neighborhood to demolish, but at the end of the day, we then end up with empty residential lots and the likelihood that anybody will ever build on that lot again is very low. So, I mean, it is a tough situation on both sides, and there are cities that have come up with kind of interesting ways to tackle it, like Minneapolis I know has some interesting programs, as does Detroit. So, you know, I know there's some...
But they're doing that smoke crack, you know, once you put up some boards to try to, you know, they come around, tam down, and, and that old place is a crack house, and, and neighbors have told me they have heard gunshots and, and all that old thing. You don't want that in your neighborhood.
Floors are falling through and everything.
Yeah, everything's going in there.
One of the constant challenges that I know cities are working towards, and Bunny and I, and several of you, we've spent a lot of time talking about it, we've made some progress, but it's infield development. As you mentioned, when you end up with a, a house like this, coming to the update, if you give it an opportunity to try and get it back, and it gets to a point where, as you said, Mr. Shine, it becomes a greater nuisance...
Right.
...by having it there. And even the fact that we do continue to try and nail them up and board them up and seal them up and what have you, they still end up being vandalized and, and used for nefarious purposes. If you do take the structure down, at least it does give you the absence of the presence of that attractive nuisance, and that the lot itself does ultimately become fully adjudicated. It gives us the option of being able to make use of one of our very effective mechanisms, that's the one-dollar lot program for adjacent neighborhoods.
And they will, right, and they will buy it, because you do have some homeowners over in that area.
And we are able to also work with...
They would be willing to buy it.
With nonprofits, as we have in various neighborhoods across the city, to do infield development.
That's right.
We've done some of that in MLK, we've done a good bit of it over in the Allendale area, and we're working to try and figure out how to be able to do that, where you're doing single residential development on adjudicated lots that you're able...
And that would be a good lot for that, because it's in, it's in an area where people own their homes, and they trying to keep the areas upright, and then you've got this...
Is that the very, very heart of the core concept of broken windows policing? When you don't manage to effectively address blight, it attracts more blight, it probably gets worse.
And Ms. Farnell, I believe we have case number four?
Yes, case number four is in Councilman Shine's area. This is fifty-nine eighteen Addaway Street. The owner is present. He has, he has replaced some of the shingles, and he's replaced the porch and put some rotten, replaced some of the rotten wood. He has done some work, it's not complete. He's requesting sixty days.
What is your recommendation?
Since he's done as much as he have, I would allow him the sixty days to see if he can complete the outside.
Let him come forward.
Yes, sir.
Now, can we have your word that within sixty days, the structure will be brought up?
The outside of the structure will be up. That's what my understanding, that you wanted the outside.
Because if not, Darcey's gonna come back out there, take a look.
I have no problem.
And when she comes back down here again, I'm not gonna have any sympathy, because the people who live in those neighborhoods shouldn't have to, shouldn't have to live in a neighborhood where you got blight. Because ultimately, they gonna blame the mayor, then I'm gonna be blamed, and we're gonna be called, and then I'm gonna lay it on Oliver Jenkins over there.
Of course. Proud candidate, most of the blame goes around.
Mayor, did you hear that?
What's that?
I say, I was telling them that people in the neighborhood gonna blame you, they gonna blame me, and then I'm gonna ultimately lay it on Oliver Jenkins. I'm gonna tell them, you and I would have had it torn down if it had not been them.
And I accepted it. I mean, I didn't really, you know...
The lesbian Oliver hold up to the city.
There you go. So I just, I just want to let you know that we're gonna give you sixty days.
Yes, sir.
And, and Darcey, you keep a tab on it, because that's one thing we want to do, we want to improve our neighborhood.
Second? Motion by the vice chair, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Further discussion, please vote.
Tempted to vote against it, just because we're not blaming, but that's...
That is six yes, one absent.
December twenty-third.
Oliver.
We'll talk about that, okay?
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Farnell.
That's all I have.
We have no ABO appeals today, we have no MPC appeals. At this point, are there any reports from officers, boards, or committees?
Yes.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Okay. With regard to the group that is interested in opening the inns, bars, lounges on Marshall Street, we've had one meeting, and we've got some of the data that we need for our next meeting. So I'm gonna propose a public safety meeting on Thursday, that is this Thursday.
At what time?
I'm about to tell you that, Mr. Shine.
You know I'm quick on it.
You're eager, and I like that. I mean, I like somebody jumping at the bit to go to another meeting.
Okay.
So let's make that three o'clock on the twenty-fourth. Now...
Jackie, you got that?
Got it.
Okay. I do expect some data from SPD in regard to this meeting. They unfortunately could not attend the last one, and the issue is, just in summary, and I believe Chief Huddleston is aware of it, and, as well as, I don't know if the police chief was there when we were talking about it, but what they're interested in doing is being open, these are lounges, on Sunday. And there's a group of them. And because it's a Sunday, there is a potential that it could be more resources for the police department. And that's what we're asking for, their analysis on it and their feedback. And unfortunately, they couldn't be there at the last meeting, and we've discussed it, they know it's in the works, and they have some, but I just want to make sure that there's no suggestion that I'm doing this without their participation, because they, they know it's out there, and I think they have some concerns. I think these, this group has some suggestions how they can alleviate some of those concerns, but we need to have everybody there to kind of work through the issues.
Yes, sir, and Chief Shaw and Chief Huddleston both have talked about that. I've been on the periphery of those conversations, but we will be prepared for that.
Okay, so, you know, that's the quasi-warning shot, if you like.
And do we, we have the actual specific issue, area, and items that we're being asked to comment on?
I'm pretty sure we even have a...
We have a map.
A map, we have a map generated from the police department, if I'm not mistaken. Isn't that correct? Who gave us that?
We do have it, yeah. We have the GIS department provided it for us.
I mean, I think everybody's in the worst...
So they're fully cognizant of what they're gonna be asked to report and comment on?
I believe so, but if they aren't, please let us know, but I, I believe we're set, but I just think in fairness, they have not had the opportunity to voice their opinion in public about any concerns the police department has.
Yeah, not in the official capacity. I mean, they were in the earlier meetings, before we got to this point where we are, we had a few more kind of informal meetings, and they've been in those. So they just weren't able to be at the, at the most recent one, so, yeah.
We're good?
I have a question. Jeff, is, would Southern Soul be included in this as well?
That's that group, that's the same group.
Now, are there ordinances or anything in place to support what it is that they're trying or trying to do or shouldn't do?
Yeah, what we're, what we've been going back and forth on for a while is how to, you know, there's some things in place that allow some of these particular places to be open on Sundays for private parties, but they really want to be able to be open regularly on Sundays. There was some concern about the distribution of police resources. So in looking at it and having a long period of discussions with some of these people, we've come up with some answers that we think provide a good resolution for everyone. And it looks like people are generally happy with the direction it's going. So we'll, we'll see what the Public Safety Committee ends up determining, but I think everyone involved, you know, up to this point, has been very cooperative, and I think that what's out there right now is a good resolution for everyone.
So we're actually looking at more than one social group here?
Correct, yeah, it's a, it's a group of people in the similar area. So it'll be a law that applies to the whole area, not just one person or another.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and then, at that same meeting, I was hoping to kind of go to step two with regard to the insurance and the taxi service. But I don't know if we've had any feedback from the taxi groups. But Jackie, if you wouldn't mind calling one of them and just see if they have their data for us. I really think that's the next step, Mr. Shine, isn't that kind of what we're waiting on, to see what, from budgetary implication, it would actually be if they changed it to align with this particular request? And what kind of a, I'm gonna use the term, group rate umbrella type of policy, what that cost would be to them?
Right.
And I don't remember, is there another issue that's in front of the Public Safety Committee at the moment, that anybody can think of? Anyway, those would be the two primary topics for this Thursday at three.
Question. Is the situation with the Magnolia School settle the traffic?
It's still in court.
The big legal issue, Mr. Shine? Right. It is still in court?
Yeah, the latest thing I recall happening on it, Councilman Shine, and I don't know if they contacted all the councilmen, or if it was just those whose district it's in, but they contacted us to get a record of sort of different communications that had gone, so I think there's still...
They did, they probably contacted all of us.
Okay, good, yeah. I think they're still in fact-finding them because of that.
Hold on, let's see if I have much to say.
If I don't have to go to court, you know, I can go fishing. Go catch those turtles that have been... Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sitting here thinking about those turtles.
Any other reports from officers, boards, or committees?
Turtle suit, yeah.
Mr. Thompson, I believe that...
Mike said he likes turtle suits.
I think you heard that someplace else. Mr. Thompson, is there a clerk's report?
Just the zoning appeal that's on the agenda.
And that, and that will be taken up at a future meeting? And Ms. McCullough, I believe, wants to recognize someone who wants to speak about that zoning appeal.
Right, Mr. Floyd Edward Williams, if we could suspend the rules, although it's not on the agenda, it is in the...
I'll second.
But we don't have to suspend the rules, but I want to make sure that he understands that we're taking no vote or no action today.
Got it, mister.
And it's important that he come back when we do have this on our agenda.
Did you hear him, Floyd? It's important that you do come back when it's actually placed on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
It's under the clerk's report.
Very much.
And if you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Floyd Williams, and I live at twenty-nine, excuse me, twenty-two zero three West Algonquin Trails, Freeport, Louisiana, seven-one-one-zero-seven. And I came by today, I really wasn't aware that I was on the agenda at all until yesterday afternoon, and so I wanted to come by and get a chance to meet and hopefully ask for your favorable consideration in my appeal. It's an unusual circumstance for me, and I've done everything according to what was required to get to this point, and I just fell on the hardship.
Why don't you explain your appeal right quick?
Okay, my appeal is that I've owned property in the Martin Luther King area, on Martin Luther King Drive, for a number of years, and I've been putting a lot of work and effort in preparing the property to renovate it. I want to put me a manufactured home. I ran into a such a health problem, I had to have a kidney transplant, and that kind of slowed me up. I wasn't able to continue with a lot of the plans that I had to get this done. And as soon as I was up and able, I started back at it. And I was coming down, talking to all of the offices here, and getting the information that was pertinent to my plans and my deal, and everything was system go, you know, everything would be okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I talked to the department, ma'am.
MPC.
Yes, well, I went before the MPC for the premier, and I had some opposition from some members of the university, Southern University, which is across the street from where my property is. They've constructed a building there, and they feel that putting my manufactured home on my property will devalue the property. Now, when I submitted my proposal for the plan, I did not put anything in there pertaining much to my property, but I do have for my next presentation, hopefully, some information that will fix that problem of what my plans are devaluing my community. I was raised in the Cooper Road area, I've been a Cooper Roadian all my life, and I would never think of doing anything that would degrade my neighbors or myself. And it was really disappointing to me to hear that, that they felt that what I was wanting to do in my neighborhood was a devalue factor. When they were constructing their building, they asked if they could use my property to stage their equipment and do all of the things that they needed to do. I had no problem with that, you know, worked with them all I could. So I'm just coming, asking if the council would have a favorable decision and consider the hardship and the undo that I've had to endure in this process. I understand that they have a plan, the master plan for twenty-third, but I don't think that what my plans are would have any major effect on what it is that they're desiring to do. But again, I'm at the mercy of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams, if you haven't received, you will receive a letter from me stating when it will be on the agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And Floyd, you heard him say it's important that you, when it's placed on the agenda, that you come back?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right.
I was just gonna mention, after we were talking about committees earlier, to see if those people who are on the Riverfront Committee are available Monday or Tuesday of next week. I'd like to do a meeting on that committee either Monday or Tuesday around one o'clock.
Tuesday would be a better time for me.
Okay.
It's on the twenty-ninth, next Tuesday?
Uh-huh.
I can do Tuesday also.
So let's say Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, at one o'clock.
You think maybe, not trying to change the time, but you think maybe one-thirty would be...
Suits me fine, yeah. It does better for y'all, one-thirty works.
Oliver knows I, I sometimes have a long lunch, period. Oliver knows I, sometimes I have a long lunch period, and it's hard for me to cut my lunch down to 35 or 40 minutes.
Before, yes.
So 1:00 is the time?
1:30.
1:30?
Yeah, that works fine.
Any additional discussion? If not, this meeting is adjourned, and we'll see everybody back at 3:00 tomorrow.
I need to just call.